I would like to introduce the panelists and for today's session. First, Professor Shigeaki Ueno, Professor, Institute of Science, Social Science, University of Tokyo, and Kenjiro Higashi, Project Manager of Decidim, COPE for Japan, Miyuki Tanaka, Curator and Producer. And another person is going to join us online. The Mr. Tadashi Kobayashi, Director General, Japan Science and Technology Agency, Research Institute of Science and Technology for Society. The coordinator is Professor Jiro Kokuryo, Professor, Faculty of Policy Management, Kyo University. Over to you, Professor Kokuryo.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. My name is Kokuryo. I am going to be serving as facilitator for this session today. Today, we will be holding a special session between the Japan Science and Technology Agency, JST, Research Institute for Science and Technology for Society, RISDex, and ICF 2021. Let me give you some background information about this session. No, I am at the RISDex of JST. In this organization, there are many projects ongoing. People and Information Ecosystem Domain is one area that I am leading. Therefore, against this backdrop, I have been asked to serve as the facilitator, which is a big honor for me. So, human and information ecosystem is including AI, technical, state-of-the-art technologies. With the development of these technologies, humans and technologies must coexist in our ecosystem. This is of utmost importance. And on this theme, discussions are taking place amongst philosophers, technologists, as well as economists and legal experts, as well as management experts like myself. People in various fields are discussing the future of the coexistence of humans and technology. Against this backdrop, with the modern building, we have been able to provide, been able to receive support on a program called "Living in Chaos," which was a series, and that was implemented. And it was evaluated very highly as a program. And this initiative is very much related to the city living environment, such as the Roppongi Hills. This is a physical environment. It just so happens that when Roppongi Hills was first constructed, I was part of the planning committee. How the information and the physical environment can be converged into one from the point of view of architecture for the symbiosis with human beings was a very important theme at that time. And against this backdrop, innovation, as well as the linkage between humans and information, was also emphasized. I believe we are going to have a very bold discussion. How we can live in this new environment is the important theme we will be taking up. We have been discussing COVID-19. In the physical space, we are increasingly communicating online with concerns, as well as is also subject to the discourse and cyberterrorism is also coming to the fore as well. We are going to be emphasizing the emotional aspect of communication. In the era of emotions, we have to be focused on this area. Otherwise, we will not be able to survive going forward. It's a central theme for us. Against this backdrop, consensus building is very important. How we can achieve a consistent building and pursue the course of democracy? Theoretically, this theme has been pursued by these experts. So, we are going to call everyone by the honorifics of sun rather than calling everyone professor. We will be engaging in discussion with these experts. And we will also be discussing with panelists who is in the practice of this field. In front of me, on the chat screen, we have audience engaging with us. So, please give us your input, listening to the presentations and the discussions. I don't know if we can capture all of your comments, but we will try to have an interactive session today. So, we are looking forward to a good discussion today. And that is all in terms of the opening remarks on my part. Let me, let, please give an upshot, a close shot of the panelists. I would like to introduce them to you now. From the reverse, Ueno-san. Please give him a big round of applause. Online, we have Kobayashi-san. I hope you can hear the audience clapping. And then, we have Higashi-san. And last but not least, Tanaka-san. So, without further ado, we will hear from the speakers, one by one. Everyone is allocated five minutes. I'm sorry that the time allocated is very short. But we would like you to pose issues, which will be subject to discussions later. So, we would like to ask each speaker to speak for five minutes. Ueno-san, please.
Yoroshiku na itashimasu. Ueno desu. Imi Kokuryo-san kara ano go shoukai itadakimasita kedo, watashi minshu shugi...
Introduced. I am a political scientist studying democracy. I came up with this new book, "What is Democracy?" That is the title. These days, we've been talking about the so-called post-truth. The fake that is not based on truth is communicated through emotion, and it gets bigger in society. That means when truth is bent, that's what we are witnessing at the moment. But the problem is more serious. That means, what is truth? Who determines truth? Well, truth is obvious. Let's some people say that the presence of authority may determine it. But who owns the authority? In the past, the senior people maybe, or senior politicians or statesmen. But politicians are not considered as persons with authority, the parents as well. So, when it comes to experts, well, listen to experts' opinions. That's what people talk about. But what was revealed in this pandemic era, that the experts' opinions differ. So, who is going to make a decision? Well, some scholarly society makes the decision. But it is difficult for us to determine who is a true authority. So, in democracy, it is extremely difficult to determine truth. Therefore, these days, what is often talked about is evidence based upon making or EBPP. Evidence should come first. That's what people argue. That is true. We should not be subjective. Instead of that, the data should be shown, and so that the policy can be formulated based on them. That is possible, and that is correct. But what starts is from there. What evidence is going to be used? What is the evidence that is worth trusting? There should be, some people may show alternative evidence. So, the evidence would not automatically mean that it's correct. The figures, maybe figures are always tell the truth. But in fact, in reality, when it comes to figures, figures are sometimes still lies. Different kinds of figures are shown by different people, sometimes misleading. That means, figures do not mean always correct. I do believe in the importance of figures. And young female scholar was saying this. In the past, that the senior people's opinions were considered correct. But now, with the figures and numbers, young researchers can make a persuasive argument. That's sad. But what kind of figures are going to be communicated? That is difficult, difficult. In my own lab, now I'm studying the method of measurement. But the method is going to be different. I will come back to this point. Democratic Index is one of the figures. BM is another infamous index. And what the ranking differs depending on those indexes. That means, each index has its own philosophy. That's the reason why there are going to be differences. What is correct? What is problematic is that in democracy, we focus all the time here and now. The present generation will make a decision through voting and through polls. And then, once it is decided, that is called the evidence of democracy. But that is what represents the present generation. But what is more important is that think about the future. We should have a long-term perspective. But that our decision-making process is quite immediate. At this very moment, the decision has to be made based on justifying the argument. Nikkei Journal, to which I made a article, contributed article. The title was "Good Ancestors." That means, that is a book about the good ancestors. For the future generations, that there were those people who did good things in the past, good ancestors. If we are considered as such, then that would be okay. That means, instead of the immediate future, but long-term future. We have to think about it. We have to become good ancestors. That is a very good book, worth reading. So, otherwise, that we are going to only focus our efforts on the present and here, this immediate moment. If you're going to make a decision, it would take us nowhere. There should be some kind of a pause, a pause for thinking. You have to take time to think about. Otherwise, if you're going to make a quick decisions, A, B, C, for example, then that will take us a wrong place. We should bring in a pause with the use of technology for democracy. That's the topic I would like to talk about today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last point you made regarding how the design can be made, I think we can discuss for two hours, just on that last topic you raised. Now, we would like to hear from Kobayashi-san. Are you ready? Just a moment, please. I hope you can see. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for the introduction. My name is Kobayashi. So, I am also the Director General of JST Research Institute Science and Technology Society. I am retired professor from Osaka University. I'm going to talk about the record of the analog era. Science philosophy, as well as science, technology is the area of my expertise. I was involved in the consensus conference. Therefore, I have been invited to talk about the process of consensus building. In 2000, it was conducted in Japan. But in the 1990s, in the Nordic countries, in Europe, technology assessment was an area where the consensus conference was developed. It is a methodology for citizens. What is important here is the scientific as well as technological issues are identified for which the citizens can engage in discussions and listen to the expert's answer and formulate the consensus on the topic, and finally announce their views at a press conference. Is the process of the consensus conference. What do we mean by expert? It is not a monolith. There are various experts taking place. Because when questions are raised, the answers could differ from expert to expert. Report is formulated by the judgment of the citizens. In 1998, I was involved in the first consensus conference. And in 2000, it was a nationwide basis based on the Ministry of Agriculture, Foresting, Fisheries. Beyond that, various consensus conferences have taken place. Science and technology expertise, how it can be dealt with, was the issue. It was an experiment of how to deal with their symmetry of information between the scientific, in terms of scientific communication. It also developed into the participation in policy formulation, citizens' participation. The Ministry of Agriculture, Foresting, Fisheries thought it was just a public hearing. They did not intend to use this for a policy formulation. Let me talk about the scale of the consensus conference. This is for the Ministry of Agriculture, Foresting, Fisheries. So, it started in July. There were two preparation meetings. It was off-site. We engaged in this preparation meeting. And the third plenary meeting, fourth plenary meeting were held thereafter. Therefore, it is a time-consuming process. And we provided offers to participate. And on a nationwide basis, 18 people were selected on nationwide. And there were the presenters to provide the basic information. And there was discussions taking place thereafter. Facilitator mediated, and I served as this role. I was a facilitator in this process. It was not well-known. We didn't know how to translate facilitator into Japanese. Kokuryo-san is serving as a facilitator for the session. So, now facilitator is well-understood in Japanese language. But at the time of 2000, we did not have a common understanding regarding facilitator. But this facilitator is an important role, which was somewhat foreign for Japanese people. Because if there is established knowledge, you just have to study. If there is established authority, guidance and orders can be provided. And if there is an effective policy package, you can have election, as well as parliamentary politics, and voting can be made. But that is not the case, because there are many uncertainties. And the paternalism was conventionally utilized. But there is a sense of rejection toward the paternalism. And there is the iPod phenomenon. The parties could have a policy package, and a selection could be made. In the area of music, album can be created by a artist for consumers to purchase. But in your iPod, it was a state of the art at that time. You can curate your own music for enjoyment by the same token for policies for single issues. So, we don't want to have a policy package. Therefore, I believe that, well, people could have differing ideas for different themes. There is diversity. And that is the reason why this new concept of facilitation, a new style of discourse, was required. Now, there are also sensitive issues in this area. In the area of facilitation, you have to be behind the scenes. You cannot guide the discussion. You must also remain neutral. And it is important to vitalize the discussions. Issues must be clarified. Also, there is a need to correct mistakes and provide direction and organization in terms of discussions. So, striking the right balance between moderator and facilitator was very difficult. The behind-the-scenes is considered to be a moderator. And the revitalization of discussion is referred to as facilitator in the English language. So, Kokuryo-san is a facilitator. That's the reason why expectations are running high for his facilitation. Now, why do we need the participatory discussion is what I would like to pose next. Because of the iPod phenomenon with higher education, also the conventional politics, subject to fatigue. But the directed democracy is considered to be difficult. There are also limitations in terms of public comment, as well as public hearing and opinion polls. But there is emphasis placed on listening to the citizens. But this process is not fully discussed. That is the reason why there is high expectations regarding participatory discussion. There was agreement, as well as a meta-agreement. Just because you discuss, it doesn't mean that there is understanding. Sometimes it may occur, but it is not always the case. But how can we resolve the diversion of views? So, even if there is an absence of agreement, meta-agreement can be achieved. This can easily be achieved. If there are questions, I'd like to elaborate further. So, there is also very important to differentiate between the public sentiment and public opinion. Public sentiment is what we mean by public opinion. So, how many seconds do you spend to give an answer? How much do you study to provide an answer? In the consensus conference, for 18 people, they have to prepare beforehand. Over time, the learning and discussions and opinion is formulated. This is not just an instantaneous response. So, it is something that is akin to a mechanism that can create a public opinion. In after Japan lost the war, we do not use this Kanji text anymore. But it is what I would like to pose here as public opinion. So, there is a difference between public sentiment and public opinion. Public consultation is very important. We have to be more creative in enabling this. And also, we have to escape from the curse of representativeness. And we have to make sure there is insurance of quality of discussions. The result must be effectively utilized. We have to make sure that people who are trusted are engaging in such a process. We have to make sure these conditions are met in pursuing the consensus conference. In the ITH, has improvement being made? Or are there challenges that must be overcome? This is what I would like to pose as the question to all of you.
Thank you. It's a lot of pressure on my role as facilitator. I think things are improving, and there are also other things that are worth noting. And I think that is one of the angle that we have and to view the reality from. That means, in other words... We are waiting for the chat comments. I could not hear the sound, but it is now... I'm closely monitoring the comments in the chat. So, I hope that you drop any comments and questions to revitalize the discussion. There is no necessity for meta-agreement. At least, we need and to identify the questions we need to face. There are lots of topics I would like to ask questions on, but I refrain from them. And I would like to hand over the microphone to Higashi-san.
This is Higashi speaking. I would like to give some practical examples. As mentioned in this program, Decidim, online platform was used, which is leading to initiatives in the regional areas of Japan. Decidim will be introduced. This is my illustration of my face. I am representing Code of Japan. I am living in Osaka. So, I would like to talk about the utilization of IT to overcome issues for citizens. It's a civic tech initiative that is being pursued at Code for Osaka. I also used to be a public servant as well, from April, 20,000 city in Hino City of Shiga, Prefecture. I am involved in the municipal activities as well. I would like to represent that as well. I would also like to mainly talk about the activities of Code for Japan. It was established in 2013. It's a nonprofit organization in Japan to think together, to create together the society we live in. This is a public model that we are pursuing. Left-hand side is showing the relationship between the citizen and the government, the local government, putting forth requests, as well as grievance, and the public service being provided by the local government. But this is not the confine. We believe that co-creation can be enabled by engaging with the many stakeholders in order to resolve the social issues. This is an extension of the conventional. Let me give you further details. When we try to change the public model, the participation of citizens, as well as the consensus building, is very important. As Ueno-san, Kobayashi-san has already mentioned today, it is the participation of citizens in consensus building is very important. And what I would like to talk about is the municipal environment. Could be 20 years, or 30 years, or even longer in a time span. But this has always been a municipal challenge with the social media, as well as online and digital methodologies of being introduced in resolving issues. Is the answer online is what I would like to pose. Now, the local government is providing the process on the left. The municipal government will engage in discussions. Citizens will provide the opinion. So, it is one return. But now, public comments are being utilized. In Hino City, consultation meetings are also conducted. There is discussions taking place, and the ultimate solution can be explained. So, this is one return and a half, if you will, in order to resolve the local community's issues. Various methods have been introduced, but this is not enough. So, there is an increasing call for making this interactive to, in order to enable this process, online platform can be utilized. But this is just one opportunity that is being utilized. But although we have worked and talked about citizens' participation, this can be renewed. And against this backdrop, I would like to talk about Decidim. It is open-source platform that was born in Barcelona in 2016, in Catalonia. It means we will decide. So, the Japanese language version is shown here. It enables direct democracy, democratic process. It started in Spain and now just spread to various countries of the world. In Japan, it was introduced in Kakugawa City of Japan in October of 2020. There are already ten cases, including those are in preparation. As Kobayashi-san has already mentioned, various processes can be utilized for consensus building. The components must be identified, and it is included in Decidim. For example, discussions can take place and minutes are recorded. But then, a handover must be made. That means that components or templates to record the discussion will be necessary. And proposals will be generated, and voting will be conducted. Button can be pressed for voting. These functions are all incorporated on this platform. These processes can be enabled on Decidim. As you can see below, this is a video from their original site. Please look at the left-hand side. You can see that on the net, it shows that people have different views. And if you look at the next one, in person, people can come together to vote for certain policies. So it is similar to online discussion. And there's also offline discussion can be repeated on Decidim. So it is a fusion of online and offline discussions. And if you go to the right, this discussion per se can be shown on the monitor so that a wider audience can participate. And on the right-hand side, you can see that this can be viewed online. So it is a process that is enabled by combining both online and offline. For example, in Europe, there are very good examples. I would like to show you the example of Helsinki in Finland. You can see the relevant site. On twenty-eighth of October, there were voting that took place. It is immediately after the voting has taken place. Four hundred proposals were made. For those who are registered, twelve years and older can vote. A total of seven thousand votes can be acquired. And as a result, for the idea, for the implementation thereof, eight point eight million euros will be earmarked as a budget for next year. By region, budget have been allocated. Various proposals will be discussed and voted on and implemented. Furthermore, this is also very important as well. For the past year, examples have been implemented already, and the information is provided in an easy-to-understand manner. This is regarding cycling Helsinki. It's a very familiar theme. People want to improve their community environment. In Helsinki, a budget has been allocated for improving the cycling environment. So what is occurring in Japan will now be shared. The first example is Kakugawa City of Hyogo Prefecture, which started in October of 2020. This is very famous as a smart city. We involved high school students, the future generation, in this process. I also engaged in discussions with the high school students. It was a very vibrant discussion, very deep discussions, and very simple, very enjoyable discussions have taken place. So based on this, Kakugawa is in Hyogo Prefecture. And Hyogo Prefecture was also looking for the future vision as well in order to solicit various views. The same platform was utilized. Then, when Prefecture has taken up, the adjacent prefecture, Shiga Prefecture, also started this as well. They are very famous for environmental initiatives. CO2 zero society is the hot topic amongst prefectures. It was utilized for this purpose. I have talked about examples that have been pursued by the government. This is open source, and so it can be used by any party, anyone, any individual. And Yokohama LDP, political party, decided to use this in June of 2021 to collect proposals in terms of policies was how it was used. And we have Tanaka-san with us today. Decidim can be used by the administrative side, but it can also be used by other stakeholders, such as in this case. Participatory exhibition is a good case in point. Various views and comments can be collected and which can also be utilized in the exhibition. Decidim can be used for this purpose in the exhibition. So it is a platform to collect the various views and opinions. So you might think it is typically used by the public institutions, but it can be widely used by various participants. But having said that, in order to resolve the problems of the municipal organizations, it is likely that this type of initiatives would be interesting for marginal municipalities. There is about one thousand seven hundred municipalities, but with ten thousand population, that's accounting for about sixty percent, less than ten thousand. In Japan, we have diverse demographics, and you can see various types of communication taking place in various levels of municipalities. This is Nishizuru City of Fukushima Prefecture with a population of six thousand. Perhaps you don't know everyone's face, but it's very small. Using digital tools, communication DX will be promoted in this municipality. They are focused on this platform. I think this is going to be very interesting as well. With that, I would like to conclude. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Quite practical approach and practices. Thank you for the introduction. Needless to say, when it comes to participation, this is going to be extremely important and echoed by the previous speakers as well. So how are we going to translate it into specific actions, which we will continue to discuss? Over to you, Tanaka-san. Can you see the slides? Yes. My name is Miyuki Tanaka. Thank you very much. I'm a curator of performances and exhibitions. So consensus building. I am doing the opposite of consensus building. That means, to what extent imagination can be extracted? And so something I am away from, so to speak. Two One Two One Design Site is now hosting exhibition rooms, which I would like to talk about today. As you can see on the slide, exhibition rooms are targeting younger generations and to build consensus. To what extent is it successful? I have not come up with a specific answer yet. When it comes to this exhibition, as you may know, among young generations, it was a kind of a buzzword among them. That's the current situation we are facing. It is still ongoing until November twenty-eighth. Aside from myself, there are two other directors, Mr. Tatsuk no Mizuno, a lawyer, and Shunichi Suge, cognitive designer, and myself. So the three of us are the coordinators of this exhibition. When it comes to rules, in particular, Japanese people feel that they are forced to abide by the rules, and that are determined by someone else. So kind of negative feeling. But instead of that kind of perception, rules are used in order to design society to a certain extent. Needless to say, they are decided somewhere to protect the people in general. But not only that kind of rule, but also by putting some kind of a conditions, we can remain creative to support creativity. We may be able to have such rules, what are positive aspects of rules. We have to recognize that aspect. And based on that, we also have and to work ourselves on them and to design the society as a whole. This exhibition is aimed and to provide such an opportunity. This is the overview. There is another room, as a matter of fact. I will show that later on. So this is the overall impression you may be able to have from this exhibition rules. More specific exhibits, the rules are supposed to be the theme of the exhibition. So it is a kind of a self-study aspect included. For example, Two One Two One Design Site, Tadao Ando is the designer. And the architecture produced by them are reviewed from the twenty-one angles. Such architecture can be explained with the captions. And as has been mentioned, civic tech is the another title and that is given to another exhibit to invite the comments from the viewers. And post-mortem, the right of self-image, how is it going to be permitted to be used? That kind of letter of commitment is also shown. And then, the marriage system, that are based on the traditional family register system, and new marriage form and can be pursued through the exhibit. So how this kind of approach is going to be upgraded? It was an opportunity for the visitors and to think about it. And some proactive engagement is also provided. For example, this is the rule with regard to reviewing. There are going to be two rules to be applied and to each visitor. And then, without looking at those rules, the viewers are required and to approve them. Needless to say, there are going to be violations of the rules, but that would not mean for them, they are going to be punished. Instead of that, they have to be mindful of the rules they need to sign on. And another trial is that there are those boxes that can be freely moved in the venue. There is no specific object, the purpose for those boxes, and there are different forms of boxes. And each visitor will be able to interpret those boxes for their usage. You can put your belongings on them. You can just sit, or you can just lie, whatever usage. But this is supposed to be one of the tools that the visitors will be able to proactively engage themselves in. Another one is about the history of changes into the venue rules toward the end of the exhibition, excuse me, of the exit of the exhibition. And then, the visitors will be able to see what has been the changes. And in order to determine, the organizer will be able to decide what would be the better rules. And this kind of history of records is posted instead of just leaving them out, but instead, informing the changes, informing the audience of the changes, and it is aimed and to build trust with the visitors. There are those two things I joined as a curator in this exhibition. One of them is Gallery One. It is a smaller venue. It is a kind of performance exhibition. It is entitled "Who Else If Not You", in Germany, a documentary drama, "Luminie Protocol". It is a group, a German group. And Daniel Wettel, who is the leader of this drama team, worked with us to produce this Hundred Percent Tokyo. This is a drama performance held elsewhere in the world. In the case of Tokyo, in accordance with the demographic percentage, one hundred people are chosen and see those one hundred people respond to questions. And as you can see in this exhibition rooms, some of the questions are used for them or the multiple choice questions are posted. This is a kind of a performance that you will enjoy. But at the same time, the visitors, when they come to the exhibition, this venue is located downstairs. But if you are going to enter the entrance, you will find yourself as part of the drama. So you are going to serve as a kind of a sampler. Please look at this video clip. I'm going to skip some of the video scenes. And thank you for your participation. That is the starting message. And this is a kind of a prelude or introduction, and then questions come. Five categories were set up in advance. They were all mixed in this video clip. It is an edited version. So the Two One Two One, the visitors, the total number as well as the total number relating to the Japanese demography. The next question is quite interesting. Who thinks your generation is missing out? At the venue, I saw this scene many times. The younger generation, a majority of them responded yes to this question. That was interesting. So in this way, yes or no, and then choice from multiple choices. And the lights are turned off in some cases for answers to come. So what we wanted to try through this trial is that when they are going to be put into the figures, individuality is lost. So by this experience, they will be able to recognize that there are those other people, others who have different views. And your choice is going to determine if you belong to the majority. But if you're going to oppose that view, what will happen to that person? Throughout the process of a societal decision-making process, there are those who are going to be excluded. And in some cases, you are going to be the one who are going to be excluded. And that kind of... And that kind of this endeavor is to let visitors experience this kind of scene. And I would like to share with you some other examples. It opened on July twenty, July two, July second. And on July twenty-third and twenty-fourth, three million or two million followers uploaded the the videos on the TikTok. And there was such a lot of yes and comments. And in Instagram and TikTok, this exhibition was just was a buzzword. And how come the younger generation, they come over to this exhibition? There was such an article in the press, and so it was on such an occasion. And the difference from what we originally expected was that this kind of exhibition, there are those people who do not share the etiquette, for example, and speaking loudly or just stepping in front of the viewers or staying around. So other people would not be able and to watch the exhibitions or exhibits. There was such a complaint. And so on this, through this occasion, we posted some of those complaints. Let those people know there were such complaints. On October sixteenth, there was a rooms review meeting. And on that occasion, we studied all those comments and comments in order to explore the possibility of an improved event and exhibition. We decided to introduce so-called a silent day. This silent day is a day when taking photos was prohibited. There was such a idea. But if there's going to be any ban or prohibition is going to be imposed, it would mean no difference from the current situation. So we decided and to designate a silent day to stay silent and let visitors abide by this rule. And this is the very last revision made to the rooms. On the twentieth, there was such a silent day. And there were those who favored this kind of idea, but there were also others. Now, we are now waiting. We are expecting comments. And then some of the comments mentioned that still there was a lot of annoyance even on the silent day. Our message, this means our message has not reached all the audience. This is the last line. So we planned this exhibition rules and we implemented it. And based on this experience, I would say that our opinions or our ideas and the passion may not have reached all the audience. This is my personal view. The two others may have a different, two others may have a different view. Consensus building is something very difficult and to achieve. Even if you invite any comments, there are those people who do not write any comments. So that means only those who have negative views are invited into the discussion. And those who are most influenced are going to be the ones who are not going to be part of it. That means the silent day is such a day that some of the visitors would find uncomfortable with. Therefore, I think it was not an occasion for a productive discussion. This is something we have not fully recognized. Therefore, a little C manners or an etiquette. There are those people with the different manners and etiquette. What would be the common platform for those people and to have the productive discussion? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much regarding how we can reach a consensus is the important topic that has been raised. And in fact, that is a theme of this session as well. So we are now receiving many chat views. Rules and manners, how do they differ? Is one topic that has been raised. Well, within the exhibition, we did not define it clearly. But there could be different views amongst the directors. But I feel that laws and and also what is not statutory is also included as well. But manner, my personal view is that is being empathy for the others. It is the the common sense that people must have or consideration for others is how I recognize this to be. And for the minority people, the violation of rules will mean that some people will miss out. I agree. And meta-agreement is will be taken up later. So thank you very much for the input from everyone. And I thought that we are going to reach this at seven thirty, but now we have gone beyond by thirty minutes. But still, we have one hour for discussion. So let us proceed. Ultimately, what Tanaka-san has mentioned just now in terms of consensus building in this environment. How can an environment enable consensus building? I think that is an important theme. And against this backdrop, I don't think we should simplify the issue too much. But Kobayashi-san said that I shall serve as a good facilitator. So I would like to say the following. First of all, I think Unosan, you said you mentioned experts. And I think other people have mentioned that as well. A curator is not appropriate was also mentioned rather. You should, there should not be a pursuit of a neutral consensus building on the part of curator. So should a curator set the theme and take initiatives? I think that is very important. Therefore, having the presence of experts as well as curators and facilitators, moderators. And when we talk about citizens, who are we talking about? We have to clarify that as well. So there are different roles, different players involved in this process. And there is a process leading to, or it could be the achievement of meta-agreement. There could be procedures and process leading up to that meta-agreement, meta-consensus. But what is the meaning of a decision? What are we trying to achieve? Is also very important as well. Higasun, you mentioned the importance of not just deciding, but execution on one's own initiatives. The government and citizens, the relationship just does not does not just involve providing services. The relationship is also undergoing change. I think that was the point you have emphasized. So the roles of the the future in terms of experts or curators or facilitators or the government or citizens, or it could be companies. How should the roles be allocated? What is the view of the relevant roles? I think this is the first question that I'd like to pose. Unosan, please.
Ultimately, everyone should be involved to make this, to make an agreement. That is most radical. And so that means that if you're going to talk about experts, we are going to vote for the most popular expert. That would be one way. But would that be okay? If you're going to determine by a simple majority, who should be the most appropriate expert? That is no way. So peer reviews are supposed to be made for the quality assurance when it comes to experts. Instead of just voting, there should be some kind of criteria to be applied. This may be go against the the fundamentals of democracy. It is not only a matter of just making a decision simply. There should be some rules or there should be some kind of the the hurdles to rethink about any kind of decision by experts. So just make a pause and to think about it. That kind of the things should be incorporated. That means the data, for example, that is objective ones. They are going to be incorporated in order to reflect upon the decision-making process. That kind of element is essential. And speaking of the facilitator role, I do also participate in this kind of a discussion. And but the senior people may often and talk or lead the discussion. But the facilitator should be the starting point. That means the facilitator's role important is to make people speak up and the listen to the views. That kind of facilitator's role should be trained. That means we have, we always have to take a pause to think about, to reflect about our own decision-making process. Kobayashi-san. Professor Kobayashi, I have a lot of questions I would like to ask of you. There was a discussion about the expert's role. Let me continue this topic. There are different kinds of experts. And citizens may listen to their views in order to make a decision. That's one process that I think you were also referring to in your presentation. But looking back at this pandemic period, one year and two years, there were so many experts. The situation is so chaotic to a certain extent. And most recently, H P B, there's a lot of discussion on it. That means a lot of media people and experts are talking about this. And that was kind of a misleading discussion. There is such a reflection these days. So the expert's role for one thing, and what is it? And what kind of correct or, I don't know, if it is, if it is a good term or not? Sorry. How do we able to come up with a persuasive decision or conclusion? Can you elaborate on that? I was sharing the consensus conference example. I was briefly touching upon that. There were confrontation of opinions among the experts in such a situation. How citizens should think about them? I think this kind of the understanding is the approach is not taken at school education in Japan. That there is almost like science-like approach, that the scientists always have answers. But that is a line. The science education at the school just teaches the principles that are not supposed to be changed. But on the ground, the scientists always have a trial and error. And the nuclear stations, nuclear power stations and situation are following as the three, three eleven earthquake. And I think the similar situation is now also continuing these days as well under this pandemic. How do we need to evaluate that? I think the only way to evaluate is that this is the reality of science. I think about the March this year, the things that the experts are talking about are different from the comments they are making today. That is because of the accumulated data. But speaking of the science, I think in science is the most intelligent tool for the humankind. Therefore, the science is essential and to come up with a correct answer. But it takes time. But at the same time, the humankind needs to make a decision. And that timing does not match each other, not all the time. The scientists also sometimes make a wrong comment. And the people need to understand that the science also air. The the science, the the consensus can and build if experts can always come up with the correct answers. The science is not like that way. Therefore, we have to discuss how we're going to approach that if the science is in that way. So uncertainty, and we have to live with uncertainty. And there are not always the persons who come up with the correct answers all the time. But still, we have to pursue consensus building.
So if that is the case, now, this is related to Unosan's comment earlier. What we ultimately want to pursue is not the right answer, not the correct answer, but it's being convinced. I think that's more important. When we talk about scientists as well as engineers, they are always saying that there is no zero risk. You cannot exclude all risk. It's akin to saying there is no guarantee for success. There is always a possibility of making a mistake. And still, we have to live in such an environment. If we try very hard and lead to failure, there could be, we could be convinced because of best effort. So we have selected that president, so we have no one else to blame. I think that is the conclusion. Best effort is important. If mistakes cannot be avoided, the result as a result from best effort should be embraced. It should be accepted. The vaccine issue is very important, very difficult. In terms of public health policy for a certain group, to reduce a risk for a certain group, a vaccine can be very effective. I think this is a good, appropriate discussion. Is one in ten thousand or one in ten thousand people having a side effect? Well, that is very promising in the context of public health. However, having said that, if there is a side effect because of vaccine inoculation, if it's a one out of one hundred thousand, but that is not the case. For that particular person is one in two instances. It's a fifty percent chance. So the the party involved will have a different perspective compared to the overall population. I think that this is a this cannot be avoid, this cannot be avoided. It is a party of relevance issue. Kobayashi-san, I would like to ask another question. What is a good facilitator? Like Kokuro-san, you are a good facilitator. Now, what should a facilitator do? Promote discussions. You have to have courage. You have to intervene with courage to facilitate the discussion. Now, I read the English article of a person who has experienced moderator is someone that it ideal to not have a presence. But the facilitator must promote the discussion. What are the necessary skills for facilitator is outlined in this article. So you have to have the technique of convincing people that you're a nice person. You have to give the appearance of a nice person. I don't think you can say that unless you have actual experience. So I have, I think there are outstanding facilitators. So far, but it's art, but not a science to date. So it's an attribute, it's a characteristic. It's something that you are born with. You said that it can be nurtured, right? Machiavelli, Machiavelli, I talked about Machiav- You have to look, you have to give the appearance of a nice person. So you have to be able to perform. But it could be an evil person that has the appearance of a nice person. So, but the person cannot be inherently evil. That is not the case. Now, Higash-san, you talked about the small municipalities. You said that it is not appropriate for a small you didn't say to that extent, high school students can be a player and have an impact and have the feeling of providing impact is very important. So it's participation in the decision-making as well as execution. And that is the context in which we want to use the word citizen. What kind of structure will enable this? We are talking about the allocation of roles. It could be government or administration or the citizens. What kind of structure do you have in mind to enable such a process? You talked about the high school student being involved. What about the high school teachers? Did they play a role?
Right, in the case of Kakugawa High School, the teachers watched the dissident and persuaded. And so he is the one who drops a lot of questions and comments. They're providing a place or venue for such a decision-making. The platform provided by the city hall that looks like a city hall is a manager. But senior high school students were trying to drop comments in order to ask questions and then responses from the officials of the city hall. But nowadays, more frank, just it is a casual conversation between the two. And then more people are comfortable with the process of the interactions. And under these circumstances, and so the senior high school students are creating the environment. And then responses are made by the elders and adults. Therefore, I don't think this is a strategic decision made by the senior high school students. But still, that kind of environment can be created. I think the roles differ depending on the time, timing, right? Well, if we can identify a trigger theoretically, that's, but that's the case. It's a kind of a pattern that the Kakugawa City was able to create. And there are some other cases in which comments would not emerge. And that gives a lot of concern to the host. But anyway, that for those who were willing to use dissident can share such information. We are now in that stage. It is extremely important to share those views. In the past expresses, practices, as Tanaka-san was briefly talking about. Now, protocols and manners, if visitors do not own them, it doesn't work well on the ground and in the chats as well. And that the education, civic education is important in order to make such roles work properly. So it is not just giving an opportunity to speak up. And no productive comments would come up in some cases. In the case of dissident, within that the dissident's structure or framework, the voters and the citizens, the recognition needs to be heightened. There is one interesting example I would like to share with you. Would you please look at this slide? That kind of a question is a question posed to the officials of the city hall. For example, that if there's going to be any comment to be invited, there was responses from the citizens and that the question was too ambiguous, couldn't understand what to respond and do not let the precious time to be wasted. That was such a comment. So what is the question for? Or asking what the question, the solving a specific question? And so there are going to be some questions to invite any ideas. But there are some negative responses from the citizens. Therefore, this is an opportunity for the city officials to think about, to refine the sentences. And the officials responded with a very formalistic replies. But this is a kind of a pause, like looking at those comments and respond to them. And then through the interactions, that they will come, get closer. For example, that the community, running the community is such a difficult task. This was a hard experience for the city official. But still, I think the city officials want to induce more comments from the citizens. But that's not the case. That the city officials should be part of the participants. They have to think, put themselves in the citizens' shoes and so that they will be able and to construct the process. By doing so, they will recognize, they have not fully recognized the whole thing. So through the interactions, this may serve as a trigger for deeper thinking. Thank you very much, Tanaka-san. What is the curator's role? The curators also make decisions. In the art category, that I think the artist's first approach, that does exist. But viewers should come first, in my view. So visitors and viewers should be facilitated to be imaginative. And through the experiences of exhibition rooms, we received a lot of comments. And I was somewhat shocked or persuaded by the comments. You will be able to see how it looks like on the ground. University students, the teenagers and those in the twenties, and they constitute the majority of the visitors. And instead of just seeking freedom, there are those views in favor of being managed, for instance. That, for example, the circulation routes should be established. That they want such circulation routes to be established. And instead of those boxes to be used freely, there should be detailed instructions to be shown to them. There were such comments posted. Probably, I think the basics may differ. That's what I thought. For example, that we have to encourage them and to have citizens' experiences. The answer to that question may be something that you already mentioned, Tanaka-san. The rule to be more creative. That's what you mentioned in your presentation. I think it's just a blank sheet, but there should be some additions, additional support and to encourage them to create it, right? I think there may be still room for doing that. That we would like to turn art into science. Therefore, digital agency. I'm somewhat emotional. I'm trying to suppress my emotion. But what is going to be standardized and what is not to be standardized? There was such a discussion. And there was a kind of an extreme comment made. And that put the discussion into some confusion. As you mentioned, the encouraging participation and the imagination, there is such a way. But as far as that is concerned, there should be an established way of thinking. Otherwise, such creativity is going to be killed or suppressed. Therefore, I think that is extremely important.
Please go ahead. So consciousness toward the content differs significantly. Like Netflix Bar, like subtitles were requested by some people. Some people just pick up the artwork without consciousness that it is art. So it's good or bad. It's a flat emotion that I felt for that generation. It's not just all bad, but they are not unbiased, at least. There is no code for them. They do not have such consciousness compared to our generation. Therefore, it is up to us in terms of how we can understand them. So some generations, some people want people to decide for them. And there are also some people who don't want to be asked questions. That is also the truth. Unosan, thank you for nodding. Tanaka-san, you are giving us food for thought. So providing rules and changing the rules. That is the basis of democracy. But democracy is a complicated process. There's a good be a domain where you want to have freedom and set rules to have your own domain is better for them. But could be coordinated by everyone and could be a system or architecture subject that could be very good for some people. It's not just for young people. People want to have rules set. We don't want to set the rules. It's just too cumbersome to do that. So how can we facilitate such a process? How can we enable such a process? I think ideas are required. So we are discussing the innovative city forum. And in this venue, in this setup, I think it is trying to, it's a structure that is trying to facilitate dialogue. So in terms of architecture as well as city planning, I believe people are always conscious about such facilitation of discussion. And if we can also reflect that in rule formulation, whether it be consensus building or it could not be consensus. I'm sorry that I'm reversing today's theme somewhat. At any rate, what is important to provide an environment of being resigned? Because after all, it's rules being discussed by everyone. I'm sorry, Kobayashi-san. I think you are not impressed. Patentism, that is something that people want. Isn't that the case, Kobayashi-san? This is a question for you. I think that is the case. I think people are longing for patentism because people can't be bothered by making rules for themselves. Now, in terms of a consensus conference, the end of the 20th century, we had provided invitations or applications. So we have 18 people that started to engage in discussions from all over Japan. And these people, in the first meeting, in terms of self-introduction, they were, the quality was very high. And they had the mentality of enjoying the discussion. These are the people who are gathered. But if you select the 18 people at the Shibuya intersection, I don't think they want to engage in such a discussion. So Tanaka-san, I truly agree with what you have said. Unfortunately, it isn't as if anyone can participate. It could be ideal, but in reality, it's difficult to realize. But having said that, we sent out invitation nationwide and we had 18 people who came to the discussion. They have high intentions, good intentions. Or there could be people, but and but avoiding the two extremes. Perhaps we can have people in the middle range participate. I think dissident is a good case in point. I think it can enable the process to involve the people in the middle range. So with high intentions as well as people who don't care, I think in the middle, there are people who will be able to engage in such a discussion, to involve them in the discussion as a mechanism. I thought that this is the role that can play by dissident. And in fact, I have a question for Higash-san. You said that it is the administration that is doing this. But they are doing it for public caring or for decision-making? What was the purpose of the government being involved? There is the people in the government. They are also involved. What is the involvement of the politicians? For the L D P of Yokohama, I think that is more appropriate. I think it makes sense for parliamentarians to do this. Because in France, they do that. But in terms of Nordic nations, they always come up with this mechanism. The population is very small. I think that is also the relevant factor. A consensus conference was also developed in the Nordic nations. It's about the size of municipal government of Japan. Very small in terms of national government as well. So the mechanism to be applied in Japan may not be easy to do. There is a big gap. There are people who are totally not interested. And if, that is what I felt 20 years ago. And I think this is the case today as well. But I think dissident could be very interesting.
Thank you for the question. Now, speaking of city assembly persons, yes and no is my answer. The role of cities of assembly persons, if it is, if its role is limited, that could be an answer. But in the case of Kakugawa City, there's a workshop targeting citizens. There's a city assembly persons also participate as a part of the city citizens. So I think it is basically up unto the assembly person himself or herself. So it is difficult and to universalize it. As you may say, if something starts, we always, the city people, the city hall, they always and talk about what would be the reaction from the city assembly people. And so far as it is not considered as something that is going to infringe on the rights of assembly persons, city assembly persons, on behalf of the citizens, and they also speak out. But at the same time, they are somewhat concerned about their roles should be performed. Therefore, Therefore, they would like and to be, from a different view, for example, and that the city mayor may find possibility in this kind of role. And that is one way. And with regard to the process, there is a difference between decision-making process changes, differences between Europe and Japan. When it comes to Japanese decidim, I think it is not going to be all the way through. For example, in the case of Kakugawa, the, there was a, the idea to select the possible nicknames of a specific facility. And then decidim was used in order to shortlist the nicknames. For example, that using the the seals and the the circulations and letters are often used in some communities. And the city hall would like and to use, like to see this kind of a facility can be used frequently by the citizens. So this kind of a process is a part of strengthening the engagement of the citizens. That's something that Kakugawa City would like and to materialize. And through these experiences, that how decidim is going to be used in order to determine the budget allocation. There are some people who are willing and to go in that direction. So with this kind of a tool in place, that those people are willing and to use it so that the democracy and politics in the local government can be energized. You are talking about the term engagement. To raising the level of engagement is supposed to be one of the goals. That's what I interpreted your comment. It may be a biased view, but that's what I thought. Is my understanding correct? Right. The building a facility is a foregone conclusion. So this facility needs to be frequently used. So for that to be achieved, the, how the budget resources are going to be allocated is a very important thing with the age of depopulation. Therefore, under these circumstances, the city government would like to invite more citizens to get involved. We have to be careful about that kind of aspect. That means it is not only a matter of engagement. But since there is such an established process, then we may need and to make full use of that process so that more people will be able to use the facility. And for that, the digital tool can be fully utilized. That's for one thing. Thank you very much. I think we have already stepped into the discussion on processes. And we only, in the time of interest, I think we may need and to move on to that discussion. Kobayashi, Professor Kobayashi.
Well, we, you were talking about meta discussion. I would like to talk about that as well. And at the outset of your discussion, you were talking about the limitation of representative democracy. But you said that the benefits of representative democracy. And I would like to know your view about the future of representative democracy. Well, direct democracy may be important in the internet era. But that's kind of a quick conclusion. How should I say this? EBM, EBPM, EBPM? It's not working well? I think Professor Kobayashi was saying that nothing is working. Sorry, sorry about my comment. So, under these circumstances, first and foremost, let us talk about meta agreement. Would you please elaborate on that?
No, in terms of recombinant DNA, I experienced that. So there are panellists who wanted to exclude this. But many panellists did not agree to that level. So in the beginning, people felt that there is some one that is not appropriate to engage in discussion. But there were several days of discussion. So people became interested why he has such extreme views. And this person said that the child has atopy and receiving treatment from the doctor. And doctor said that additives is not good for the child. That was the advice given by the doctors. And the recombinant DNA food should be genetically modified food should be avoided. And this doctor is an expert, a specialist in this field. But regardless of that view, the ministry is trying to introduce the DNA-modified food. And he could not agree to that. But in trying to reach agreement, cannot reach a consensus of excluding such a technology. But this person's experience and views cannot be entirely excluded in building consensus. This is not appropriate to do. Therefore, the majority said that as a minority view, the minority view will also be reflected as a minority opinion in the conclusion. And the person with the extreme view said, was very impressive. He said that that is appropriate, that is all right. And appreciate the fact that he was treated fairly. But prior to that, even if he tried to state these views, he was not taken seriously. That was the type of experience he's had in the past. But now, even though he is minority view and people did not agree, but his minority view has also been respected. So this is also an appropriate type of agreement that was achieved. I saw it with my own eyes. There are going to be many themes that are similar in kind. That is the reason why this kind of process is very important. For example, the nuclear power plant waste. How this is going to be treated? This is going to be very difficult to agree to. But this is a very most difficult theme in which agreement must be reached. So depending on the content, it could be very different. But for hard topics, meta agreement could be difficult to achieve. And whether it can be science or whether it would be the domain of art to reach meta agreement. This is something that society must pursue going forward. It is, has to be cemented. Thank you. Regarding meta agreement, are there any views from this panel? If not, let's talk about representative democracy. This is not a difficult topic, in fact. If we have dozens of people participating, whether they represent society will be questioned. At that time, what the people are thinking of image is that it's like a sampling based on statistics, statistical sampling or sampling for machines. It's a statistical representation system that has been applied with the discussion of 20 people. Does, whether it represents everyone in Japan will be subject to discussion, will be challenged. So this is a misunderstanding of the word "representation," in my view. Because in a single-seat constituency, one person is selected. He is representing that constituency. But he cannot represent everyone in that electorate. It's a fiction in terms of politics. It has nothing to do with statistical representation. Of course, in terms of number of people, statistical calculation can be made, but that is not the case for content. Because even with one vote more will mean that he can take the whole constituency. So with good design, with good materials, good discussions must be had. And whether it is 1,000 people or 1 million people, it's a knee-jerk, rather than knee-jerk reaction type of investigation. I think it should be respected. This is a popular sentiment or public opinion issue that I raised earlier. A good discussion based on information and discussion must be had. And this is what we are trying to do in terms of representative democracy. I'm trying to assert this, but nobody is listening.
Thank you. A kind of pause. You, I think he was talking about. In this age, instinctive comment or staying in the filter bubble, biased views. We are exposed to a series of such opinions. I think giving ourselves a pause for thinking is important. Would you elaborate on that? What is dangerous? And what is useful when it comes to pause, making a pause? I think Professor Kobayashi was talking about this. Minority views that should not be killed or eliminated. How they are going to be reflected? But at the end of the day, we do not need and to be constrained by such minority views as well. But what is your take on this? It is difficult to answer. As Professor Kobayashi explained, the single-seat constituency system is one thing. Ultimately, if there are going to be polls taken every day in order to determine which direction should politics go. So every day polls are taken and the majority vote is taken. And that may be one of the most typical sampling method. But is that okay? Viable? But there is a different view. I think that we are going to change ourselves while we are thinking. For example, in the election as well. The election, the same thing can be said about the elections. So I think the voters should need to closely monitor the elected politicians and so they can make a different decision at the time of the reelection. If it is just a one-off event, then it is going to be short-term and temporary decision-making. It should take time and to reflect ourselves. And in the process, we modify ourselves. And in the representative democracy level, we have to let the politicians of political parties to have a full-time discussion so that the voters will be able to take time to think about it. If it is just a sampling alone in an instant moment, it would not give us a conclusion or a solution. Thank you very much. Higash-san.
Well, the senior high school students you were talking about, there should be a lot of different views inside the decidim as well. And at the end of the day, I think that you were talking about the politicians. Some politicians then join as members. And how we are going to overcome the differences way ahead? What about that process? In particular, I'm willing to take up this comment or the question is about this. The reason why younger generations do not participate, there are going to be sanctions imposed on them by the senior leaders. And there will be tangible and intangible pressure imposed on them. Truly, here in the Japanese context, I think it is a kind of a suffocating environment. And the conformity is going to be imposed on the people. So if there is a nail, nail head is to be hammered down. In such a society, how this kind of process can be materialized? And what is the reason for any changes that you have witnessed? In the case of decidim, not only limited to Kakugawa City, unfortunately, this kind of, the access logs can be captured in a digital tool. The data can be captured. And what is interesting, if you take a look at them, usually one minute and stay on the website when it comes to city hall. But about three times, three times longer or six minutes, for example. It is just an average number. But it is, the staying time is much longer. That means that this kind of content is extremely important. The city hall officials do recognize this fact. And therefore, they want and to pose many questions to the public. And there seems to be some differences among those local governments which introduce decidim. For example, there are those, the parliament people who encouraged this introduction. And we have inquiries from local governments. And we always ask them and that if they are ready to try, to give it a try. And sometimes, there will be no replies from such inquiring local governments. About 1,760% of small local governments. And I also work for Hino Town. Going forward, I think there are those retiring generation, they have some dreams. And that may be able to materialize by the younger generation. So that they know that they are not good at digital tools. So they want to rely on younger generations who are good at it. Therefore, the stereotyped views may prevail in some local governments. But there are also other local governments that can overcome that kind of hindrance. In small communities, such digital tools may be fully utilized to overcome that kind of a difficulty. And they are persuaded that this is the one that they really would like to pursue. So there are those local officials who are not constrained by that kind of social background or age. And they fully understand and can communicate with each other. That's something I have recognized through the inquiries, so quite diverse.
Thank you very much. We are quickly running out of time. So I'd like to take up questions that I think is interesting. The voting rate is very low. So the voter situation is not appropriate and issues are not clarified. Tanaka-san, this is a question for you. I think agenda must be set appropriately to enable such a discussion. And that is the reason why I'm asking Tanaka-san. It seems that perhaps there is a disconnect in terms of discussions that we should be involved in. TV is spending a lot of time on these issues, but the issues is not clear. It is not functioning because the agenda is not being set appropriately. And the basic information relating to the agenda is missing. So I think that is the gist of the question. But you wanted to hold the exhibition rules. Is that related? No, we have, we did not set the theme of rules, actually. Now, in terms of your question, in my context, I don't, I would like to mention the following. I'm always, I'm trying to engage in expression with disabled people. So the regular social norms as well as from the normal society, these people are marginalized deliberately as well as in terms of consciousness. I am trying to be to engage in activities with these people. I think there is a rational consideration, which is very important for disabled people from the area that is very... So we can't give this, there is a physical difference. So if you want to see something very high, you can't give a box. But that is not the case. So we have to try to provide what is appropriate for the disabled people. And I think it's applicable not only for disabled people, but for everyone. In order to understand, there are different layers of being able to understand. And our soul-searching has led to the conclusion that if we try to provide this from outside, there is the logical process, the cognitive process could have been improved. I'm sorry that we only have five more minutes left. Therefore, I would like to ask everyone to say one message each. Ultimately, Tanaka-san, in the five, in the initial five minutes, it was mentioned that in order to provide a forum for consensus building, I still don't understand what is consensus. Even though we've been discussing for two hours. So what is the objective? What kind of forum must be provided for enabling this process? And what kind of process should be reflected that will allow everyone to be convinced and be resigned to the process? Society. Buy-in can be obtained. So I would like, I've given everyone time to think about this topic. I think you have had sufficient time. So we'll go in the reverse order of your presentation. So I'd like to ask Tanaka-san to start first. Now, I think I've already addressed this topic previously. When we try to reach a consensus, reach agreement, prior to reaching consensus, you have to lay the ground. You have to be on the same page before reaching consensus. You can't have the perspective, the assumption that everyone has the same perspective. That is not the case. Sharing the process is required furthermore. Without you, if it's not, if not for you, who else? That is a type of mentality that's required. We have to get people interested. And that is where the bar is very high. There is a gap between the generations. I'm still struggling. I want to continue to experiment on this topic. Diversity is very important. To respect the other is very important. This is also relevant to my activity as well. So that is the understanding I've been able to achieve.
Quality and equity. I think that is a separate topic we need to discuss for another two hours. Thank you very much. What I strongly feel through this kind of experience is that I have been involved for 20 years in citizens' involvement. And there are a lot of lost topics. We are going to explore new topics when it comes to local governments. For example, digital-related topics. But if you look around, these are, there are many things that we come back to. For example, Decidim, SNS, web page. If you take a look at that, I think a similar topic was already taken up. We have to rediscover those topics, maybe good ancestors role. I think it was a good topic and that can be rediscovered. I think we are doing that kind of a thing in many cases. So for example, the merger of offline and online, that's what Decidim is pursuing. That means things that exist as a good practice offline could be rediscovered. And so something that was good could be incorporated into the, into the online. We need and to make full use of those good practices. Thank you very much, Kobayashi-san. There are many things I wanted to talk about. In fact, as Tanaka-san was talking about the rooms and to be created by the the parties involved. But there are some cases and that there are a lot of people who are not interested in that. I was somewhat shocked because that was the reality. I recognize that that is the reality. On the other hand, in the case of Decidim and the consensus conference as well, with regard to the public agenda items, there are those who are willing and to speak up. So those voices should be captured correctly and designed and experimented and should be pursued, should have been pursued more. And that's what I have, that I had recognized in the 2000s. There may be many things that deserve a trial. I do believe so. In particular, now there is a self-responsibility that some of the politics are talking about. But at the same time, we have to educate people that we have to create a solid and a robust society. That is part of the self-responsibility. And Professor Uno's tame or pause, I think we should have digged further into this topic on another, on another occasion. Thank you very much.
I was in Amatsuka, Kinosima, this, until this morning. And depopulation is progressing and young people are being invited. A long-term strategy was created involving all the local people. A lot of young people are coming in. And 20 years have passed. I have been involved in participatory democracy. For example, that the local citizens' ideas are being invited. That means without the direct involvement of the local government. And I think I was really surprised and excited. I think the, there should be, the intergenerational linkage is important. Young people are invited by the older people and all young people may take the center stage. This kind of approach is essential. That means that the passion as well, intergenerational relationship is extremely important. There should be more models to be adopted. If there is going to be a passion, you can feel it. And if you feel it, you are invited. So there should be a passion as well as intergenerational linkage. Thank you very much. Well, in fact, this level of passion should have been communicated online. But at the same time, there are those who can participate because it is online. This is a kind of the limitation as well as the advantage. There are new things we can think about from the viewpoint of new democracy or participatory democracy and creative democracy or society to be invented. Sorry for my poor skill as a facilitator. But I would like to give my sincere thanks to all the panelists for their full-fledged passion. And sorry about not picking up all the questions. But once again, thank you really very much for your participation. With that, thank you. Thank you.